Okay. Okay, so welcome everybody to the October 12th, 2022 regular meeting of the Scotia Village Board of Trustees. We'll start with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will dispense with the roll call. Everybody's here except Joe, who's excused. Three is privilege of the floor. I've had a number of complaints about last month's privilege of the floor being uncivilized. I was prepared to read the guidelines, so everybody was clear on it, but we only have one person on on the list for today, so. I think we'll go ahead with it as it is. Lynn, would you, you want to do it from there or do you want to come up to the microphone?
And it goes right along with what you just spoke of.
Be civil about it.
I will, unless I'm repeating, repeating what other people said, which is going to be difficult, but I'll do my best. Lynch, 221 Glen Avenue. I wanted to address a concern that I have about village meetings.
Pull the microphone down just a little bit, that's good.
On January, I'm sorry, on September 16th, I sent an email to the mayor and the board about this concern, but only heard back from one. So I will read the email so that it is recorded into the minutes of the meeting and will be on the record. Mayor and trustees, I wanted to express my concern about recent village board meetings. I personally witnessed the rudeness of residents during the budget municipal meetings last spring. I thought harsh comments were due to the subject matter of the meetings. I was wrong. At the meeting like this past Wednesday, I was subjected to the same behavior from other residents. Trustee meetings are meant for residents to learn about upcoming projects, hear debate between mayor and the board, decisions, new codes, and for residents to voice their own concerns. Understanding that many residents can be emotional and heated in their comments to the board about specific matters that are important to them. I believe it is up to the mayor and the board to take and maintain control of the meeting. The meeting is not meant to be a free for all for insults. While privilege of the floor remarks can be heated and emotional and with raised voices, they should not be discourteous to fellow attendees or board members. This is the part that's going to be hard, but I shouldn't hear shithead asshole, condescending prick, or stupid liar at a village meeting. We are all adults. You are all aware of these rude and profane remarks made by some guests at the meetings during the municipal bond meetings, especially those remarks made to our guests. Your silence is letting the matter continue. Someone needs to take control. Remind residents before privilege of the floor about the rules. It is not a question and answer time. Board responses will be provided at another time, and residents can put their concerns in writing and submit them. That may cut down on residents repeatedly yelling, "Answer me," to the board and being loudly encouraged by those in the back of the room. When anyone shouts out a rude and unnecessary comment, the mayor should address it immediately. Remind those attending that the meeting is an official village meeting and rude, unruly, or insulting behavior toward any attendees or the board will not be tolerated. It is not the time and no place for that kind of behavior. I did not attend these meetings to hear rude insulting remarks yelled from the back of the room. Liars, lining their own pockets, never do anything to help, will never address us, stupid. I attend these meetings to find out what's going on in the village, how the mayor and the board are handling issues and problems, and to learn about upcoming events and department updates. In the current station, situation, the mayor and the board have no control of the meetings. That was the email to which I got no response from anyone. So I checked with the town of Glenville, went to one of their meetings. When signing in for privilege of the floor, they have the rules available, similar to what we have here. And it says that the board was, has the right to rule a person out of order for making vulgar, obscene, and distasteful comments, for making personal attacks, or for loud threatening and violent behavior. The participation in town meetings notice states it is hope, it is the hope of the board that such participation is orderly and constructive. That is the town of Glenville, they have a five minute limit. The town of Rotterdam has privilege of the floor rules written in their agenda each month. People can't miss it. And they have a four minute limit. These rules are also available on their website very plainly so that people know. So when someone's standing here and saying, "I want you to answer me," you can say, "We don't do that now." This is not for those people doing privilege of the floor. For the most part, they're here to voice their concerns and they're frustrated with what's going on. I'm speaking more to the audience members. Those standing to demand the answers don't understand the process. That was obvious the last time. This merely makes the speaker angrier and more frustrated, and it incites the audience to shout out rude remarks to the board. If the rules and the process were clearer, these comments could not be made, or the board would at least have a basis for delivering consequences for bad behavior. These ideas are something that you might consider for future meetings. It does nothing productive to watch the board and the mayor sit there silently at these times. It makes the mayor and the trustees look uncaring about the rest of us, they have to listen to them. And it makes you look like you're willing to get run over by those with the loudest and often rudest voices during the public meeting. While it is your duty to hear concerns from the citizens, it is also your duty to take control of these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. I meant to do this before, but I wanted to have a. I'll come back to you. I wanted to have a moment of silence for some of our important people of the village who died. I missed the last month and I, there were two I meant to do last month and forgot, and now there are two more. So a moment of silence for Emerson Tuttle. He ran the bowling alley for years and years. Jane Lansing, who died last month. She was a proprietor of Lansing's Dairy at the corner of of Lyon and Tenbrook. Died this month, Vern Foster, our faithful barber. He just, just retired. Very Kinkton, Scotia Main Street. And we just had today. We had Melissa Canali died. She's a she was a former wife of one of our firemen. She was an employee of mine for quite a long time. A good friend of the village. So we could have a moment of silence for those people, please. Thank you, everybody. Okay, continuing on item three, Amanda.
I'm Amanda Gonzalez-Borone. I live at Six North Home Street. I hadn't intended to say anything, but Lynn kind of inspired me. I want to agree with 100% of what she said because the decorum in some of these meetings needs to be controlled and professional, and that comes from the top down with the board. I do want to mention that it's not helpful when emails go to the board members and they are left unanswered. I'm not justifying behavior, but I can say that I can certainly see some frustration there when we do actually get an opportunity to speak and not getting an answer when they do reach out. It might compound that. I also want to say that you have to lead by example, and some of the emails that have been coming specifically from the mayor have been unprofessional and not something you would expect to receive as a village resident. So I'm not defending behavior, but that's something where you look to our leaders to show the example that you want our villagers to uphold. And that's something that has been on my mind lately that I just wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else I can be heard of privilege of the floor? Okay, we'll close that. I'm going to skip to item number eight because Beth's here to talk to us a little bit about that and rather than for her with the other things. You want to, sure.
Hi, I'm Beverly Clark, the village historian. I just wanted to ask the board tonight to approve a possible expenditure. I was planning to fill out a grant proposal for the Preservation League of New York State for a building condition survey. Our consultant too, I've worked with before, Wally Wheeler, mentioned that this might be a good time to apply. They do technical assistance grants in the fall. There's a maximum of a $5,000 project. The municipality or historical society, whatever, has to come up with a 20% match, which would be a maximum of $1,000. Now, because of the timing of the meeting, I have not gotten a final report from Wally about what his actual cost would be to do this, so it could well be less, but the 1,000 would be the maximum. They have a process for the applications. There's a pre-application. There's a discussion with the person at the Preservation League. There's a discussion with the consultant. You submit the full application and all this stuff. So they decide these by December. They could, along the way, say, "Well, maybe it would be better if you applied in the spring." That's a slightly different criteria. Or maybe it would be better with a consultant to do it in the spring instead of fall. I don't know, but I thought I needed to grab you guys tonight. And so what I would be asking would be that if you were willing to take out of my budget or someplace in the budget any matching funds that we would need if we indeed got the grant. And that were the building condition survey would put an expert eye on what needs to be done to the building, prioritize it, stuff like that, so we could plan for capital improvements, which I think we need a few. So that's one, one way to go on that. So that was my request.
Do you think you can keep track of the the grant application and that kind of thing?
I think so. I did one a few years ago, which we didn't get. So I, the process is very similar. So I think we can do that okay, although I might have to ask Maria for a few figures and things to fill in, like we did the other time, but not too, too much of your time for that.
Can we have a resolution to Beth to apply for this grant?
I can, I'll make a resolution to submit, to have the village historian submit the Preservation League of New York State Technical Assistance Grant from the Flint House Building Condition Survey in the amount of $5,000.
I'll second.
On favor?
Thanks.
Okay, good. All right, item number four. We have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Two to H2M Architects and Engineers.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Number Two to H2M Architects and Engineers to engage in structural engineer for the assessments of the existing municipal facility. It's important to say that any of these things are in relation to the municipal facility are well within the referendum amount. So we're not exceeding anything. We're not putting anything new in. It's just matter of process to.
Steps along the way.
Along the way. It does not increase this expenditure anymore than the guaranteed referendum amount.
I will second.
All favor? Item five, can we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign contract with H2M Architects to provide environmental hazards materials pre-renovation study?
I would like to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Architects and Engineers to provide an environmental hazardous materials and pre-renovation study. For for this building, which it's our.
On favor? Item six, can we have a resolution authorized to award the bid to William J. Keller and Sons, the amount of 611,000 for the Washington Avenue Bike and Pedestrian Connection?
I would like to make a motion to award the contract for the Washington Avenue Bicycle and Pedestrian Connection Project to William J. Keller and Sons for the amount of 611,382 dollars.
This is, this is the one that we had all set up with somebody else and they backed out of it at the last minute. We were hoping they could do it this year, but it'll be next year.
And in relation to the amounts of. I'll second.
All in favor? Item seven, can we have a resolution authorized the mayor to sign a proposal for engineering, hearing services with Prime AE for the MS4 program?
I'll make that motion to authorize the mayor to sign the proposal for the MS4 program coordination with Prime AE for the amount not to exceed $7,200.
One we have to do every year for the stormwater. All in favor? Item number nine, can we have a resolution approve use of $50,000 for ARPA funds for well two repairs?
I'll make the resolution to approve 50,000 use of ARPA funds for well number two repairs, which is, we've been talking about for a very long time.
I'll second.
Item 10, we have a resolution to approve the use of $50,000 of ARPA funds for small business grants.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the use of ARPA funds for $50,000 for small business grants.
Also something that we've been talking about.
For a while, and I want to thank Lydia for the guidance that we needed to do, as well as Maria for, for keeping track of all the ARPA funds.
I'll second.
All favor? Item 11, we have a resolution to approve 396,500 use of ARPA funds for matching grants, park grants, Washington Avenue Bike Pedestrian Connection and Sunnyside Road Bridges. This is the matching funds the village needs to come up with for those projects that we already have the grants for.
So these are two critical infrastructure elements, three critical, yeah, three critical infrastructure programs. And I will, and they're all within actually the original intent of the ARPA funds. So I will make a motion to, to approve the mayor to allocate ARPA funds for these three projects.
I'll second.
All favor? Okay, item 12. I realized the resolution to amend the fund year 2023, 2223 budget to decrease for the chips, chips allocation.
I'll make a motion to amend the fiscal year 2223 budget to decrease A.5112.2000 by $8,963.30 offsets by A.3501 to correct the chips allocation.
I'll second.
All favor? Okay, item 13, mayor's comments to the board. So I told you Joe was excused. He emailed me and his, his friend Sandy is, is very sick and he has to, she's undergoing treatment for multiple brain lesions, I guess, right? So anyway. But keep him in your thoughts, please. I went to, today to the SoFi Police Academy graduation. And our student, Aaron Lobby, was top of the class and he's a graduate and I assume he'd be coming online tomorrow, right? A very, a kid to be very proud of. He gave a speech for the class and was directing traffic the whole time. It was pretty, pretty impressive. I want to read to you the municipal facilities update from Hoover Brewer. The Building Committee continues to meet on a bi-weekly schedule to further develop the overall four fans for the fire station municipal building. We received the required survey work and have started the site design process. We've engaged a well-respected grant writer to assist funding all possible state and federal funding and finding funding. We're reviewing multiple exterior facades to prepare for a public comment meeting November 19th. This is Saturday. We'll do it here from 11 to 2, where we're hoping that people will drop in and say, "I like that one. I don't like that one." So put that in your calendars. It should be interesting. The overall project schedule has not changed since the September 10th, 2222 update. Due to concerns regarding the election, Joe Talbot has removed himself from the committee. We must direct any questions to Sean Boran at Hoover Brewer. So that's good. We did did a beautiful job of paving on James and Catherine and Collins. I think this month the fire department got the new pickup, right? Is it this month? They sold the old one for a good deal of money, so we can be happy with that. We'll talk about that at the work session, right? Dave, was that, were you talking about that tonight or at the work session? I don't see it on the agenda, so let's wait till Monday. Okay, that's all I got. Correspondence, Lee has sent a special committee report.
So the, first off, the zoning board of appeals did not meet this month, so I have no report from there. The, the Business Improvement District met this past Tuesday at Turf Tavern. Discussions were had regarding snow removal, and that seems to be, as well as sidewalk conditions, and the desire to continue the process of removing some trees that are creating ADA hazards. So I, I'd love to just be able to kind of, you know, put together a, a group of individuals to kind of chat and coordinate that so that we can have some movement. One of the, the challenges with snow removal, you know, the, there wasn't expressed that because of the allocation through the, the bid tax only being $24,000, the, the current level of, of what the village has been charging for that stretch from Route 50 to Freeman's Bridge taxes the budget taking away from some of the promotion and other support work that they're doing. So I would like to continue discussions to try to find creative ways the village can support the bid in removing snow for that stretch of the area. To the Western Gateway Bridge, correct. You know, it's for, it's, sorry, Western Gateway. I need coffee. But anyway, what, what doesn't change is that is a four lane highway. And with the, with the actual residential equipment that they have to remove this, you know, i- it poses some, some safety risks for the volunteers that have been doing this for, for years. So again, I know the, the New York State Constitution prohibits us from being able to do it for the bid. But I think there is, I'd like to explore some other, other ways to continue having that, and I think that would go a long way to help the bid in keeping our, our commercial district walkable and pedestrian friendly during the, during the winter time. I do want to commend, you know, the bid on some great fantastic flowers in the baskets this year. You know, the, I know the village has been helping, you know, provide watering services to those, to those said flowers. And, and they've been looking beautiful all, all year, but unfortunately with the cooling temperatures comes the need to transition to the dreaded W word with the S word. So those, those baskets will actually be coming down as the avenue prepares for the upcoming holiday in the avenue. So Holiday in the Avenue was another, another topic of discussion at the bid. There's, there is excitement and cheer and merriment happening on the bid. And there are, look, they're actually circulating to the businesses information about the window decoration competition that's been happening. So, you know, it's going to, the, the village will look festive this holiday season. The, I did also bring to them news that we will be moving forward with the approval of $50,000 for small business grants, and that was very well received by the businesses. You know, and I'm all, I want to take a moment and personally thank, you know, the members of the board for supporting this idea and, and really pushing it forward. I, I feel comfortable and confident that we have not only a fair process, but a process in place that will really make sure that the, these dollars go, go to work for our village businesses while also improving the quality of life for the village business district. So thank you for that support on that. In terms of the police department, I actually was pleasantly surprised and happy as I attended back to school night at Lincoln. And there was Detective Mike Peckham standing side by side with the teachers at Lincoln Elementary School, being introduced to all the parents. And he did the same thing over at Sacandaga. And he's in the schools each week for about 10 hours, working directly as a community resource officer. But knowing Detective Peckham, he's there a lot more than those, those 10 hours and balancing the, the other work that, that he's doing. And it's, it's interesting to also see him interact. I've seen him interacting with youth and, and children just casually on the street. And, and this particular position, as well as the, the initiatives of the, the police department are really doing, really working hard to maintain our mission of community policing here in the village of Scotia. And I couldn't be more proud of our police department at this time. Also to report, the Police Reform Committee met to discuss the implementation of Cortico, as well as the, the police met with the Traffic Safety Committee, and they met to discuss radar signs, which will, I'm sure anyone who's driven on a New York road has already seen a radar sign to kind of warn and remind travelers how fast they are going. And it's my understanding that these are going to be placed in high traffic areas where we have a lot of pedestrian traffic specifically around our schools. As a gentle reminder to folks not to speed through our village, we are home, not a highway. With that is all I have to report today.
Brian, oh. The bid asked if we could maybe please stop watering the, the flowers so they're not quite so heavy when they take them down? But Nick has done a fabulous job. We got to hats off to him. Heather?
Yes, I just want to reiterate what trustee Cook stated with regards to the Police Reform Committee. I did attend that meeting on September 20th. It was a relatively short meeting. We discussed the grant as well as the progress with regards to Officer Peckham in the schools. He's a wonderful asset. I'm so happy. We were working on this when I was the police liaison and we, it's nice to see it come to fruition. And I do hope that this program stays in the schools because I do think it's a benefit to the school and also the residents of the village of Scotia. I had a meeting with Chief Wood. Thank you again for your time with regards to some updates with the fire department. The mayor just indicated with regards to, we finally sold the pickup at auction that closed yesterday. I believe the price on it was about 11. That closed yesterday, I believe the price on it was about eleven thousand five hundred, and the village will um, I think at about ten thousand three hundred and fifty dollars in the next few weeks, so we're looking forward to that. Also, last night, um, the village received a grant from the, from Schenectady County. It was presented by uh Legislature Pete Frizoni. And uh, the county, I want to thank the county specifically, there was a total amount of fifty-three thousand dollars that were awarded to volunteer fire departments. The Village of Scotia did obtain uh the largest grant amount, and Chief Wood just give, just gave me this, so I'm going to pass it along over to the mayor, eleven thousand seventy dollars, correct? I did check to see if the uh check was inside, it was included, so Maria will pass it on to you, okay?
So we got a tab of, of board that holds up.
The big check presentation.
So thank you again, Schenectady County, and uh that will put uh to very good use. The uh call numbers are up significantly, about two hundred and seventy calls uh from this time last year. So that's been a uh specific trend, and it doesn't look like it's going to decrease, so that has been um, the trend a- all this year. I don't know what happened, I shouldn't have commented on the rescue truck. Chief Wood and I were speaking about this when, when how, how was the rescue truck doing in our last work session? And I think I, I may have jinxed uh the truck, I don't know, but I guess the, the water pump blew. And uh, they were using the new pickup in the interim, but um, is it back on the road as of today? Okay, well, then I redeem myself, so I guess everything is okay. Um, that's it that I have with um, from the fire department. I also wanted just to mention, I hope everyone had a nice time at the October Festival, it was a beautiful day. It looks like there were a lot of nice activities, so I hope everybody had a nice time. Uh, lastly, there was an email, Chief Aragon, with regards to, that was addressed to the Traffic Safety Committee, which I'm also on. I don't know if you saw that email. Yes, it had to do with speeding on Riverside. Okay, so I did reach out uh to that resident and I said, I, I just mentioned to, to follow up with you with regards to that, there are a lot of children in the road, uh, that is a, that signifies Scotia, right? I mean, should we like to see the children playing and have a good time, so just make sure everybody is uh, not speeding in the village, and the police department, I'm sure will be extra happy while they're patrolling. One less uh thing that they have to do. Thank you, everyone, thank you all the village employees, as usual, you do an outstanding job. And I say this at every meeting, I appreciate you as a trustee, and I appreciate you as a resident, so thank you and keep up the good work. Oh, I just want to mention Lynn Trudell, thank you for your comments, okay? Um, this has been a, with regards to privilege of the floor, but it extends outside the privilege of the floor at uh our guests that specifically with regards to the municipal facilities project. And Mayor, just so I don't forget, thank you for giving us an update um, on the municipal facilities project, so I know there's a lot of people out there that are inquiring as to where we are, and, and Lynn Trudell brings that up, but, but I hope that this feedback and we uh have an update from the mayor satisfies that. But um, I just wanted to mention, it is very embarrassing when we do have guests or even resident on resident and um, people are ridiculed, I, I just, I think we all deserve each other to have a some respect i- in this forum, we're here, the board is here, uh you know, we're public servants and we're here to try to do our best. The residents, this is a place for them to, to come and express their concerns. And it's really not a place to use vulgar language, disrespect our, our guests and our, our employees who try to do a wonderful job every day, and they do, um, they give a lot. If, you might not know, but uh if you talk to them and you're involved in the community, I think we have a great group of village employees, so I, I thank you, and I'm sorry if, you know, we don't say anything at this particular time in a public setting. I know trustee Rizzo was very upset, uh, I think he sat right over here and he had to be very vocal with regards to feedback at, at one of the municipal facilities project. Uh, there's been many people who have been outspoken, misinformed, and are um ha- have been very disrespectful, I'll just leave it at that, so, you know, I hate to put a limit on privilege of the floor because I think everyone's voice is equal and the concerns should really be uh addressed to the board so we can make progress. But if they're going to be done in such a disrespectful way, I do think maybe we should uh, consider having parameters as to uh the police chief is sitting in these meetings. Maybe they have to be escorted uh out of the meetings. I was very upset on a personal note at one of the meetings, that the language that was used by a guest um, just went on, and it's, it doesn't show that we're a really solid community when we have people like that act in a very bad fashion, it's not representative of this community. So I think we should look at it and discuss it at the next work session. Perhaps we put women on privilege of the floor, and if people are uh out of line, maybe they're asked to leave. And maybe they're, in the future, they're barred for not being able to come uh in this type of setting unless their conduct is um respectful to everyone who voices their opinion and also anyone who sits on this board. Thank you.
So you're going to cost us more money, Heather, the chief has gone along a taser of his own. Uh, George?
I uh, I think I mentioned that to you when you came up to, came up the stairs, it's a, it's interesting how there's been so many challenges going on and so many uh misinformed people who are reporting things that are kind of half true and half not true. Um, I do chuckle back to the one facilities meeting where there was one individual who sat there, and it was one of his first times being at one of those meetings, and he's just sitting there and disbelieved me, and he goes, "Good grief." And it made me chuckle because it was such a simple answer to what's going on, and uh it's, it's, it's refreshing to see that response as well to, gosh, it's really frustrating that all this stuff is going on, but um, it's a it's good to talk about it too, so um, yeah, thank you Lynn, thank you Amanda. Also, I apologize, I didn't have the right camera selected when we got through privilege of the floor, so when we were talking early on, there was the sign of the blank podium, so I apologize to people who watch this video, it's my fault, I didn't hit the right button. Um, like the mayor said, it's great for the facilities project is moving forward, uh, it is not exceeding the amount that we went to referendum for. That's the whole point to it, it can only get cheaper and it's going to be a great addition. Um, with the renovation of this, just this building as well for the village, it's going to be a great place for all the residents to be part of and to be, and to have a proper, safe and appropriate um workplace for our, for our employees and first responders, so it's really great to see it and be part of it. I do encourage the November nineteenth, November nineteenth uh, to stop in and voice your opinion on the aesthetics of the outside, there are a couple things, and it's, you know, obviously it's a dollars and cents um discussion as well, so um, we are focused on staying within the Business Improvement District guidelines, which are out there on the website as far as coloring and aesthetic, aesthetic places, and there is some sort of unity that we're going to try and provide between this building this building and that, and the new building, um, so that it kind of looks like it's the same place, a unified, a unified place at our village hall. Village uh municipal area, so it's uh good to be part of that. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for working with Beverly um to find that funding for the Flint House and for working on the parks over there. It is a, it is a building that's in need of many repairs, and uh if we're going to prioritize it moving forward, it needs to be uh secured. The uh ARPA funding for the businesses, uh, the business grants, it has been worked out a long time, it has been put out there that it wasn't worked on for a long time. Um, in this culmination of assigning the funds to it, it is finally, what we really wanted to do was make sure that we had a little bit of structure around the application process, around the um, the, the scoring and how, how you can rate each individual app- application and its benefit, benefit to the business owner. Uh, we didn't want it, want the money used for things that it's not supposed to be used for, um, which is a definite benefit. And it was important to us to work with Maria and his, her contacts um to have a independent uh reviewer of it, so that there is no perception of you know, he said, she said, it's going to stick to the guidelines that we put forth, it's going to be a completion of the application. It was an all-encompassing kind of examples of our examples of our neighbors and their processes of, of dealing uh ARPA funds, which kind of put us in a place that we really wanted to be a little bit certain about how we are, um, because villages are always the last to get funding, um. Then we are allocated to another municipality as far as their population, so that even further reduces our allocations of these funds. So, you know, when we look at the future and of the village, it's, it really makes sense to kind of investigate those those uh, you know, village to a city processes, it moves, moves towards kind of uh looking at our you know, expansion of our population or our tax base to, you know, really preserve preserve the village in, in the way it is and its independent nature, um, because it's, it's important um, to the village and the village responds to a lot of different things, so it's important. I think that's about it.
Couple of scheduling things before we do that, I don't think we, did we mention uh, so the um Halloween, it's a Monday this year, the thirty-first of October, uh, the fire department will be doing cider and donuts again. Uh, starting at four-thirty and ending at five minutes to eight. Holiday on the Avenue, uh, did you talk about that?
I, I alluded to the bids preparing, it's the first.
December fourth, there's a, the fire department, the police department are going to uh readdress the chili cook-off.
Are the snowplow drivers going to hop in on this?
Uh, and the, the restaurant's doing a chowder, uh, so that'll be good. Item fifteen, departmental reports, we have a motion to accept them?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the departmental reports and thank the department heads for their hard work in putting those together.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Item sixteen, budget adjustments for September, can we have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to accept, to make all budget adjustments for the month of September.
I'll second.
All in favor? Item seventeen, audit of claims, can I motion to pay the bills?
I've done a lot, so I'm sitting silent.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Justin's job.
So uh, seeing that I do the audit of claims, um, I will make that motion if you wouldn't mind seconding.
I'll second.
All in favor? Item eighteen, does anybody have any new business? Item nineteen, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.